But.
That note, we're going to order.
Are you going to schedule or to call a meeting?
We'll call it please.
OrthoMan Ortheany is here.
Here.
The president.
President.
Wilken.
President.
Deckard.
And then Rodney Rogers.
President.
Anyway, we're in form tonight. Please stand and join the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is that we are the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And it brings us to our special presentation. We have two of them this evening. The first one is Xerex Energy. Robert Bob, first one.
If I can announce that correctly.
Perfect.
They told me how to announce it.
Uh, my name's Bob.
Next Xerex Energy.
And Mary, Pete Trinkowski.
Next Xerex Energy.
Sorry, but I think there was a line for the technical difficulties.
Let's call this. We're going to go over two things. I'm going to go over uh, next Xerex overview. And then Mary and Mary is going to go over the power market. So next Xerex is a company that provides Centrilia with all of their power. And we have done that for several years now. And our project goes through the middle of thirty. You may not have heard of it there, but we're a large company, a hundred years old now, a two hundred company. And primarily made up of two main companies, one of the largest companies, which is the largest investment authority in the nation. Or great, so Xerex is the entire east coast of Florida, some of the Panhandle and the southwest of Florida. Six million meters and about thirty-five gigawatt generating capacity. And the other larger sister is called Xerex Energy Resources. And we're in forty-nine states. And we are, we do renewable, we're the largest renewable developer and nobody produces more energy from the wind than the next Xerex. We're also a leader in battery technology and transmission, gas pipeline. And if it's got energy, we're involved with it. Let's have a large nuclear plant, which is in Florida and also in New York. It's constant. Restart and retired. And uh, site in Iowa. Uh, and then we're under there, uh, next Xerex Energy marketing, trading on uh, next Xerex resources. Um. Can recognize, recognize our power. Uh, we're max, we uh, commit to Xerex Max. And we do the right thing. Then um, recognized by many different publications like me, Forbes and Forbes. And we appreciate it. And then, so as far as next Xerex marketing goes, we are the largest uh, power, electric co-ops and meetings in the area. Which is pretty much the same as you asked. That's what uh, Mary and I do. Uh, we manage thirty gigawatts of energy, whether we own it or we're other third party companies that manage that. And we have three hundred industry experts that um, they work daily with. My students, my students, my students. And all of them, they create a lot of slides today. But what are we going to go over there to take this off? Mary is that um. Power markets have always moved a little bit. But recently, the last four or five years, they started going a lot. Really jumped up. And very volatile. And we're going to walk through that. Um, why, why they're doing that? Since Trilia has been isolated a lot of power markets. From every power market. You guys signed a deal back in twenty eighteen. A fixed price deal is paid the same for the rifle prices through twenty thirty. You're the envy of Missouri. Really, really good deal. And um, not everybody has it. So they're happy to see these markets, these markets, and they're seeing their prices. A lot of rate increases because of that. Um, while your neighbors face that, and you guys don't. The market still stands still. And fundamentals that are driving the changes that we think of permanent. It's not staying the same today that way. Why? Good news is, is that you have a really good partner and you have a long term deal. And um, because of our view of the country, you've seen what happens. Which utilities fare better, but proactive when they do some early planning. Uh, versus those that are more reactive. And kind of are complex. So our role is to help you understand what's happening and why it's happening. So we need a boarding leading.
Wonderful. So thanks for the time of being here. Um, and just as Bob said, next Xerex, again, we're in this together, we want to share with you all the things that we're seeing in the marketplace. Given our, given our, running our business. And uh, and try to make sure we have these conversations and you guys coordinate accordingly. I'm going to go ahead and just grab her, I'm sorry, slide seven, which right here is the, the green graph. Um, and like I said, I wanted to raffle through uh, some perspectives on the market right now. And I know a lot of you have probably seen some of the statistics in this line. So really just trying to provide to you all again about what's taking out there and how it affects Trilia. So this uh, slide seven is really, this is a, this is kind of a snapshot of the MISO marketplace and what you're seeing here. Forward market prices moving forward, uh, like I said, into twenty thirty. And I think that the story here, you don't have to look at every point, it's really, it's really the tale of two sides of the graph. There's the left side and the right side. The left side is where you all sign that original contract, that fantastic deal. And that was in the moment, the market place was a little calm, right? Right? Not as many peaks and troughs. And a little, and obviously pretty low at that point, definitely a market dip. Obviously, starting in about, near twenty twenty-one into twenty twenty-two, we're just seeing this huge upward pressure. And then often a lot more volatility, you're seeing a lot more deeper dips and drops there. So again, kind of diving into this a little bit more, if you want to move to the next slide. Slide eight. This is that same graph, I'm just dissecting it a little bit. Really want to talk through kind of these two, kind of two market characteristics that we see here. So the green box, I'm getting again, when you all sign the last deal, you know, really great timing in the marketplace with that. So we had the natural gas shield room was keeping gas prices low, building gas. We really had a new coal plant retirement, they were humming along, you know, providing that great flow of energy. Uh, you had a lot of renewables coming along, wind, solar, it really started to enter the marketplace. The key point here, demand growth was pretty flat, sometimes negative as well. But really just, you know, kind of a steady plus of growth, but nothing, nothing that really, uh, you know, kind of rock pricing at this point. And then, and then that's where we came to, what we're talking about here is kind of a new normal that's moving into this red box. We're really seeing a lot more volatility. Uh, you know, looking at natural gas, right now, rates are relatively low. What is interesting from a generation standpoint is the price to build natural gas has tripled in the last year. A lot of that, the supply chain disruptions, things like that, it just costs a lot more to build things these days. Uh, coal returns have significantly increased. We're going to dive a little bit deeper into that in a minute. Uh, we're seeing, we're seeing, again, renewables are entering the marketplace now, they're really in the marketplace. And again, it's just a different, uh, the different generation profile that I'm seeing retiring, so a lot more renewables into the mix. And then, you know, really looking at that demand, uh, demand variable there. And I mean, this is, I think, probably dominated by headlines, massive, massive growth. And the, you know, electric needs, AI for data centers. Um, uh, yeah, so huge growth in data centers. Obviously, we all know cell phones in our pockets, we're electrifying our lives, and I charge my phone, right? I mean, just things, we never used to be charged now, so. And then also, I'm expecting a lot of onshoring and manufacturing. Back in fact, in manufacturing, needing a lot of, needing a lot of power. So again, this demand story is really a influence of a number of different factors coming together. And that's really influencing again, this pricing volatility you're seeing. So moving to the next slide, slide ten. Um, I mentioned earlier the power generation transitions. This is showing kind of what's dipping below, if things are retiring, coming above, things are being built. And really, the dominant story here is, you see the black line with a lot of coal retirements. See on the top line, a lot of renewable additions. And the key point here is just that these are very different generation profiles. Coal, very difficult to replace, a lot of those really large megawatt facilities coming off, when you see the size of some of those cars. And again, so it's really just seeing to the average generation portfolio and what that, what that looks like. And then the, let's see. All right, and then move to slide nine. This one is a little busy, I don't need to look at like what ever seen a lot lies. Uh, but the story here is really, again, trying to show kind of a number of different markets across the US. What you're seeing, where your eyes get drawn to, or where these stocks are peaking up. And that's just really showing, again, these spikes in pricing, the real time pricing that we're seeing. And again, it's a different view of what we're looking at earlier. And this just really shows, I mean, you see a lot in Urco, um, MISO and Indiana here, I mean, all the different dots are showing different, like the different spikes. So again, this is really meant to illustrate happening everywhere. It is not just the MISO, Missouri, Indiana, Midwest issue, it is not just the California issue, it's not just the Tennessee issue, it's happening everywhere. We're really seeing it. So really, again, speaking of fundamental shifts that Bob was referencing earlier. All right. And looking at slide twelve, um, this really, uh, just want to call. Wait, I'm sorry, slide eleven. Slide eleven, I skipped slide eleven. I'm sorry about that. Uh, this is slide eleven, which shows the, again, taking a deeper dive into coal retirements. So that previous graph that had the dips in there, that had um, was showing kind of the past retirements. This is more of a floor here. And it's really good, again, demonstrating, we're going to see, we're going to see a lot of losses, you know, come from it. And there are some delays here. There are some reasons for viability, economic things to keep some of these plants going, but we are seeing, we are still expect quite a bit of coal to come off the grid. And that's again, very difficult to replace, and some of these that you can tell too, I mean, some of these facilities are over a big watt on the grid. So like I said, something to keep in mind as we're looking at these changes. And then slide twelve, back to the demand story a bit. Uh, and again, telling you guys, I'm showing you all that this is really everywhere that we're looking at it. I want to call a few out in particular, just looking at kind of neighbors around, but you look down the bottom of the Lexor, you know, you've got, you know, point three percent growth, or point one percent growth. Um, you look at Urco, one point eight percent, six point two. And I know for us, it's a big one that really is down, I mean, point three percent to point nine percent, these are demand numbers instead, that have not been seen. Ever, I mean, my, it's just, it's almost sometimes difficult to comprehend. So again, a lot of this demand we're seeing is, uh, like that everywhere, it's coming, it's affecting the marketplace. Um, and then thirteen here, this last slide, um, on the current market trends, again, this is showing the growth rate and talking through. Look at the start here, that twenty ten to twenty twenty-five, I mentioned earlier, you know, we had a pretty average growth rate of about point one percent. Um, you know, across the US, as far as demand growth. And now again, we're seeing this two point three, you know, growth rates as far as uh, uh, demand growth rate. And this breaks it down a little bit, I guess, we have data centers, but you know, looking at large industrials, I mentioned onshoring and manufacturing. Uh, you look at, uh, you know, potential, like I said, electrification, heating load and electricals and other things. So again, we're just seeing quite a few pieces come together to paint this demand picture. So, like I said, I hope this provides a color as far as seeing through the headlines and kind of seeing what we're seeing from a next Xerex perspective. So I'll turn it back over to Bob to, to, to uh, to where the energy market changed and its effects on Tricia.
Yes, respect. So our last slide is the energy market has changed, failure to remain in position. You think it's changed fundamentally currently? With the whole retirement, the restructuring, the investment, the demand growth. You're seeing price resets across Midwest, across the country. The volatility, the volatility we saw that, low cost era, that it's over now, is over. Trilia is the exception right now. So again, the good news is that you guys have a long term deal, long term relationships. And you have time to plan, or other utilities don't have that kind of time to plan. And you have options that other utilities might not. So I would encourage the city to use that time wisely and to, you know, ask us questions if you have. Anything you want to know, or other cities are doing, do other, address that, we can help you with that. But thirty sounds in the lung? But it's, I mean, it's already August of twenty twenty-five. So it's going to go fast, but you guys are in a good position. Thank you all for your time, thank you, Tara, for letting us have the time.
Do you mind asking any final question, if you have any questions?
Yeah. Yeah.
I have a question, so as, you know, the RTOs, you know, as you have full suppliers, municipal facilities, and related to data centers are driving a lot of the key that we're seeing in demand. What do you guys think in terms of what municipalities, what RTOs, and what your self fulfill suppliers are doing to address this, or are we coming out with different restructurs? What are you saying?
Yeah, various things, so it depends on where we're going. We've seen some co-ops that are able to write a random rate just for that, new large load. It's why we do that too. Um, it, it, demand is real, but there's a, and it's a range to it, right? We have divisions within our company, a lot of them. Data centers will go to Trilia, they'll go to the next door, and everything's like, oh my god, we're going to have this mega water, whatever. But there only going to be one, right? There's not going to be so many of them, so. Yeah, it, it, I'm going to take a hundred percent of that utility facility for my data center to run. Um, servers and that, versus gigawatt. Gigawatt. Data centers, that's multiple, that's no science, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to add to that, yeah, one of the things we're seeing from our perspective is I think some of the data centers and that kind of larger scale are, are kind of realizing that, okay, you're integrating it into the larger marketplace. So you have MISO, for instance, updating it, um, in the load modifying resources that they call it, basically kind of up and down. So data centers come in, they might say, okay, for peak times, I'll come down a little bit, so not increasing your obligations. So there may be ways, I think, as, you know, some of this stuff moves forward for the RTOs and the utilities and they, and the customers themselves to work, you know, the workers of those issues. Because I think it is, yes. It's a massive challenge. Obviously, they need the power, so they really want to work with those utilities to make it work.
I just know that I think that moving forward for the community, that's going to be tough, because I mean, you're looking at private citizens, these are tax dollars, and those aren't running match with data markers. Yet we're being asked to bear the burden of basically business costs. So I'm asking the business, what you're doing to shift that back to the businesses that are actually, like, drawing this and causing rates for private citizens to go up. So that we can understand.
And I was going to say, I think it really comes down to what Bob mentioned earlier, you're like the tariff structure. And making sure that you're, you know, native laws are protected, and I mean, you can't sell, money to upgrade a station, you know, if someone has a sideline picture. And make sure, again, your, you know, your residents and taxpayers are protected, because that is what most of it is. So it really comes down, and that's true, I mean, Xerex, I've experienced, I've worked with, and MISO South, working through some of those questions. So really trying to, to raffle and make sure that, if utilities stay with this core, we hit a core model, obviously, it can be good. And making sure that it's getting focused on its residents and keeping that, keeping that safe.
Our president, he strips us from developing our own renewable system, solar, wind, what we might be. And when that was developed in twenty twenty, is your president, he was a conservative. Now, as we're sitting here hearing what it might be, in relation with actin' on increases, the cost of power. As we look to a new agreement, would we be allowed to develop our own renewable system? To supplement, not saying that we do everything, but our new suppliers are allowing us to do that.
Yeah, I would say, we could definitely talk about that negotiation, if you want to extend a deal, if you want to add a mega one, whatever, yeah, that's what we can definitely talk about. I think a lot of cities are doing the same thing, maybe they're getting grant money from the government. And they want to, you know, shed some load. We can talk about that, for sure.
That's really bred for Xerex, I mean, we really like coming in, really customized, no two minuscule for the same, no two cooperative for the same. It's really about making sure that, you know, you all, whether growth objectives or removal objectives, or the batteries, things like that. And again, we should pull in some batteries from Xerex, we guys want to talk to somebody who developed batteries, or talks to somebody that develops solar, things like that. What works, if it helps cash generation, you know, we can facilitate that.
I'm going to put a lot of questions that I think everyone's here to hear. The type of double being, if our contract continues as it is until the end, we do a new contract? Ball per, ball per figures? What would you see as a percentage increase in our cost for wholesale power? Ball per, ball per figures? We're not settling a deal here.
Um, so you're asking if you write out the current contract to the end? So what's it look like in twenty thirty one? Hundred percent?
That's, yeah, okay, that's what I thought, and that's why I think folks were here to hear.
The double is what double is, twenty thirty one, if we did nothing.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thanks for the presentation. It moves us on to our next special presentation, the millions keeper on our annual report. Annual audit report.
Name everyone. I'm the initial, I'm the partner, I'm the audit partner, Claudia. Joining is Starve Christian, she is the senior that was in charge of the city's affairs this year. But like I said, in prior years, I'm just going to go through our summary report, which is the report in the, in the bounds, probably all the audit reports. And this report, this is the highlights of the individual reports, she does the audits, the complete copies of all the audit reports are included in that blue book, so we do have all the details.
Uh, we're going to dump our internal financial statements themselves, so we recently completed our audit of the city's financial statements as of this year, that is the twenty first, twenty twenty five. We issued an unmodified statement on the financial statements. Saying that they can be relied upon, and they are completely stated and reported with demodified accounting. That the city utilizes for its books and records.
Real quick, something turned off again, does it like get it on? Because I can't get work in. Now, when are we getting a feedback? We're getting some brutal feedback.
Well, the forums, also going to be the voices.
Does this sound better?
Does this sound better?
Much.
Did it now, did it now?
No, yeah, I think it's good.
I think it's good. Yeah.
Um, just a reminder that the city is ultimately responsible for the financial statements. That we all have an responsibility to provide an opinion on the financial statements, and make some more work before. But we did, we had a financial statement for the city again this year, common practice for us. So, but they were reviewed and approved, criteria in Maryland before they were issued. Just another reminder, we do use our judgment, the recent financial statement audit. We take a look at balances, transactions, controls, operating expenses, spending of the year. But that helps us really focus on the financial statements that are really misreaded, that are a little bit that process. So it helps us fully hone in our own certain criteria on financial statements. We mean, we don't audit everything, we don't have enough to give that unmodifed opinion on the financial statements. I think to complete to the summary report, there is a table that summarizes highlights from the city's governmental funds financial statements for this year twenty twenty five and twenty twenty four. Really high level, the total expenditures increased by a little over two hundred thousand dollars for this year twenty twenty five. And I would see the various, the variety of function. So the city handles the general government public safety, and culture measures were all up for the year twenty twenty five. For the prior years. And for those governmental funds, total other financial sources are used by a little over three hundred thousand dollars due to transfer activity on an annual basis. Seeing the city's governmental funds, proprietary funds, utilities.
That activity increased this year, this year twenty twenty five.
On the next page, page three of the summary report, we have a similar table that summarizes highlights from the city's proprietary funds financial statements. And those are the utility funds primarily. This is the twenty twenty four column. Twenty four. This is a documented document. That's, that's, we always say we do that though. At a proprietary fund, total operating revenues increased by about six hundred and fifty thousand, you see increases in utility consumption usage rates. And total operating expenses increased by about one point two million, due to various increases in communication expenses. Incurt by those utilities. Um, and also the transfers, and that's the greatest by a little over three hundred thousand due to transfer activity with those governmental funds previously mentioned. We also get to the auditor, see an occasion letter at the RISL server on it, so that's all that is found in your blue book. Um, just to hit a few highlights here, essentially this letter, we are required by our professional standards to issue it to you all, this, 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 this city. To communicate the multiple status of the audit, results, things like that. Um, we did not know any transactions, so we consider to be both unusual and significant. And nothing was required to be accounted for or reported separately in this year's audit, compared to previous years. We did evaluate the financial statements to make sure they're reasonable, um, the city doesn't really use many, many corporate financial statements. You all utilize that modus operandi. But I'm assuming most of your financial reporting is cash in and cash out. Also evaluated disclosures to make sure all the disclosures and the support, what's required to be supported in the statement, so all the required disclosures were included. We didn't encounter any significant difficulties in performing our audit, thanks to us, Maryland, for helping us to facilitate. Another smooth audit. Again, did not have any disagreements on the calendar auditing issues, so really working in that letter. The last one or report or backup book is the management letter. As a reminder, we do not provide an opinion on internal control of the financial statement audit to the city. So we consider internal control, so we're going through that process previously. We don't do enough work on internal controls to get an opinion. We identify any deficiencies, or having findings, we would report them to you all in this management letter. We did not identify any weaknesses in the city's internal control this year, that is consistent with prior years. Nothing would be significantly concerned about there. Um, we have for a number of years, recorded a few decisions that have been related to the preparation of the financial statements. Um, we include that because we, and then perform the audit, we do a little bit of cleanup work, we propose adjustments to the financial statements, and then we prepare those. We just kind of try to get kind of that, communicating it in this letter that's coming in in all those reasons, also those financial statements, like are referred by management. Uh, because we are proposing adjustments to financial statements, we're preparing and giving an opinion on, we'd rather let you all know about that. Uh, we have some other recommendations for the city in the past, absolutely just best practice type recommendations related to inter-balance balances and the general ledger that's already being used. And there's the annual management. Coming, whenever that happens. Um, I would encourage you guys to let us know if you have any questions. We can be too involved in the process and maintain our independence, but the recommendations they got in this letter related to some general issues. Some general ones right now, so we're going to make sure those don't continue to be issues in your system. So, yeah.
Yes, let us know if you, um.
Got any questions or if we can help and maintain our independence. Um, a good thing to note is that in previous years, we have had significant missing in this letter related to the preparation of bank reconciliation. Um, a good thing to note is that previous years we have had significant deficiency in this letter related to the preparation of bank reconciliation. That has been a recommendation that was suggested so that finding is resolved this year and monthly bank reconciliation is more in the system. We have many issues in the state area of cash this year. I must say that's very playful. If any of you have heard that. Any questions about the summary report specifically? The audit process in general? Any can answer for the board this evening. Alright, if you think it went well, thank you. Anything, if any questions come up. Thanks for tonight's agenda.
That brings us to number five on our agenda, which is public hearing on the 2025 tax rate. This is standard tax rate, public hearing. Yes, public hearing, anybody want to?
How much did it, how much did it, on a general basis?
You want to please, follow the rules.
I was wondering, Jason Court. It does show what was previously and obviously happened back through all the old records.
So, I don't remember which one, but they even stayed the same or we stayed the same or we kept it.
It's nice when something does that. Across the board.
Any other, any other comments? Comments, public hearing on the 2025 tax rate notice. Move on to number six, which is comments from citizens. Opening up comments from citizens. Any comments from citizens, mic close, can you name an address?
About anything or about the tax?
About anything.
Oh, okay, well, I'd like to speak if I could.
Yes, you can. We've been limited to three minutes and for priority purposes, it is not a dialogue or discussion. It's a chance to share. Will you get back to you?
I've emailed both, Ali Rogers.
And so I'm here because I moved here three years ago.
Worked on the back of my house, slept down, screened in porches.
Can you picture your name and address?
Teresa Olmes, H O U M E S. My dress is 441 South.
So I moved here and, as I said, I slept on screen in porches since 1991.
Down 54 degrees. I love that, it's too cold.
But, the last week of July, everything's fine. And then the last week of July, I went out there and it's like flashlight shining right in my eyes.
Well, there is a street light, I guess, over the corner of Simson.
That they replaced the light all along.
And then, yes, nobody cared about it.
Since I moved here April 23.
But all of a sudden they fixed it.
So it's like having a flashlight.
Flashlight right on my eyes while I'm trying to sleep. On my porch. I know this is trivial thing, but it's not trivial to me.
I've got a little map that I drew up.
I only made five copies, I think, so.
Just to let you know what the situation is.
Donnie can you overlook the situation? He understands what it's, a problem for me. If you look at the bottom left-hand corner, that's the corner of Simson.
It's light pole there.
That's the one they replaced the bulb for.
Well, it shines straight into my porch. And it's, I actually did all the math, 270 feet to the corner of my porch. Accurate, pretty accurate. I used a wheel for the distance along Simson, 216 feet. And I used a wheel on the 165 feet.
And I just did math, 271.
And then, of course, it's another 26 feet into where my bed is. And I asked the, I told the city, asked them, they would lower the fixture. Cause they put that new house there.
That new house there at the corner of Rawlins and Sims.
And it's like four feet too short to block the light. So, I went around town to several different locations and there are fixtures at lower levels.
Not on Sims. It's the same as others, all the others on Sims.
There are lower fixtures.
And they just know how low that can go.
And then, I'm here just asking if they could either put a hooded. Put on my side of the existing fixture. Or if they could put a hooded fixture. And I drew a map, I looked online. They have two different types.
Probably more than two.
One of where the bulb kind of heaves down, so that really won't do anything. The other one is where it lights the intersection. And, you know, they do not understand the intersection.
And I understand the intersection needs to be lit.
271 feet away probably doesn't need to be lit. I was wondering if they could use something about that.
We can ask.
We had one house that was tore down and this greenhouse is a brand-new structure. The other one was a two-story.
And then there was a tree taken out.
We had two things that's happened.
We did some investigating. That's why the light all of a sudden appeared.
So we'll, so we'll.
We'll take this.
We'll take this to Matthew Russian as per the, as an option and why.
I really appreciate it very much. I love this little town, very happy here.
Very happy here.
So, anyway, thank you very much.
We appreciate you bringing that to it.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Any other comments from citizens?
I don't citizen.
Make it from.
Well, that's okay. Just 40, 231 South Hickman Street.
So we heard the power presentation.
And 100% increase in electric rates would be dire. And I think some of our citizens, it would literally dead. We'd no longer afford to cool their homes sufficiently in the summer or heat them sufficiently in the winter. We would have to start making choices between power and medications.
Whatever it is that he decides to do. It can't be there.
It can't be there.
Yeah, options available to us, well-located, well-located for wind power. We have two closed landfills that they use for power. We have other possibilities that we can investigate and look into. Means that we have to put out a bomb. Then we have to put out a bomb. What we currently pay for power at our current rate. A, almost any first C of a bomb that we have to put out for. Just wanted to get that out there and set.
And I do want to bring up one that I had, my notes from last week. They had three more residents. One of them is a repeat about the excess of dogs at the house on Jefferson. Someone actually came up and said they counted seven dogs at the house two weeks ago.
Did that affect?
I will have to double check. It's two houses over from Chapman Academy, two houses to the south from Chapman Academy. It's a greenhouse, but I don't remember the street number on Jefferson.
Well, it's the first house north of Cox.
Yes.
Two houses from Chapman Academy.
Two houses from Chapman Academy, one house from Cox, I just don't remember the number. Two houses from my house. I don't know where it is, I just don't remember the number.
I bet three people.
I bet three people coming up in the last.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Three people about those dogs.
About the dogs.
Has everyone controlled them up there?
I know that Sandy's been working on it.
It hasn't changed.
I think they're looking for a way to get them, the shelters are full, they're looking for a way to get them to happen.
Now, in fact, right now, the alternative society shelter in Columbia can't do any intakes. They've had to take all of their animals out and put them in temporary shelters so they can do cleaning because there was a virus, a cow virus.
Understand, oh, it's hard for the dogs and to know anything that happened to the dogs. Four dogs in my home, because we care for animals. But we're within city limits of the number of dogs we can have.
Any other?
Any other comments from citizens? The unanimous closing comments from citizens move on to number seven, consent agenda. Four evolving meeting minutes, bill of works in utility committee minutes, the general government. Public safety committee meeting minutes, collector's report and activity reports.
Got a motion and second.
Got a motion and second to accept consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Carry.
Motion carries. Just down, just down to. Let me see, can I find the page under? 25.
Is it 25 or 24?
Move to down to the council table over 1250, 1226370 and 47 cents.
Make a motion that we approve for payment of accounts payable over $1,250 and now down to $226,370 and 47 cents.
Second. Got a motion and a second to accept the council table of $226,370 and 47 cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Carry.
Motion carries, thank you.
Hey, that moves us in our action agenda. The bill member.
It's the bill member for the first.
585.
Looks like we're gone out for our banking services. All of this is central bank for our depository contract one, it's the first one. Any discussion on this?
We did receive three bids, they're in the packets. Looking through the bids, the city needs a recommendation would be a same.
Central bank. We got central bank, central bank, and then central trust bank.
So each one is a little different. So the first one's authorized, the first contract with the bank. Second is for authorizing electronic services agreement with the bank. And then also, safekeeping agreement.
For 2545, the, I think it was first reading by title only.
Second.
The first and the second, 2585, given its first reading by title only. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill to create an ordinance entitled, ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia Missouri to execute a depository contract and pledge agreement with central bank of Boone County. I move the bill number 2585, the second reading by title only.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for 2585, given its second reading.
By title only?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, please proceed.
Bill to create an ordinance entitled, the ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia Missouri to execute a depository contract and pledge agreement with central bank of Boone County. I move the bill number 2585, be adopted by roll call vote.
Got a motion and a second to carry.
Motion and a second.
Bill number 2585, be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor? Aye.
Motion carries. Roll call vote, please.
Omen Hudson.
Four.
Omen Decker. Omen Rogers.
Four.
Four.
Number please.
Ordinance number please.
3216.
It used to be a different ball for this. It's been a while, it's been a while since I've had to do the marital ball. Okay, so the next page is. You're under pressure, aren't you?
It's the continuation of the bill.
Quite a few pages.
Page 815.
Page 813. Huh?
132.
132.
Okay, so the next one is bill number 2586.
One with grace, is it 130?
Two.
130, alright, I'm there, alright, I'm there.
Need a motion?
I move that on number 2586, be adopted by title only.
Motion and second.
A motion and second to title, bill number 2586, given its first reading by title only.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye. Any opposed?
Any opposed?
First reading please.
First reading please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, the ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia Missouri to execute an electronic business services agreement with central bank of Boone County. I move the bill number 2586, the second reading by title only.
Motion and second.
Motion and second, bill number 2586, be given its.
Second reading by title only.
Second reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, the ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia Missouri to execute an electronic business services agreement with central bank of Boone County. I move the bill number 2586, be adopted by roll call vote.
Got a motion and a second.
Got a motion and a second, the bill number 2586, be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Roll call vote, please.
Omen Decker. Omen Hudson. Omen Decker. Omen Decker.
Four. Motion carries.
Motion carries, ordinance number?
3217.
Move to see, finance authorization, safekeeping agreement, central trust bank.
Next page.
This is the next page.
Bill number 2587.
Got a motion, the bill number 2587, the second reading by title only.
Got a motion and a second, the bill number 2587, be adopted by, I mean. Given its first reading by title only.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
All opposed?
Ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia Missouri to execute, execute a safekeeping agreement with central trust. To be authorized in the mayor, mayor pro tempore. Either the city clerk or the deputy city clerk or the deputy city clerk in the city of Centralia. Opened and maintained one and more, safekeeping account. Safekeeping account. The city of Centralia, the city of Centralia, the city of Centralia. Any chance of moral fund and cemetery, perpetual care fund with the central trust. Mayor trust company located in Jefferson City, government security. Bill number 2587. Given its second reading. Given its second reading.
Got a motion and a second, the bill number 2587, be given its second reading by title only.
Aye.
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Second reading please, second reading please.
Ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centralia Missouri to execute a safekeeping agreement with central trust. Authorized, the mayor, mayor pro tempore. Either the city clerk or the deputy city clerk. The city of Centralia, the city of Centralia, the city of Centralia. Maintained one and more, safekeeping account for the city of Centralia. Any chance of moral fund, cemetery and perpetual care fund. Central trust, the central trust, the government security. Located in Jefferson City, government security. Make a motion, bill number 2587, be adopted by roll call vote.
Got a motion and a second, the bill number 2587, be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Roll call vote, please.
Omen Hudson. Omen Decker. Omen Decker.
Four. Order carries, ordinance number?
3218.
Thank you. Move this on to 10, legal.
Setting the property tax rate.
Setting the property tax rate, 2025, which is what the.
Public hearing was on.
Public hearing was on earlier today. Additional discussion?
Bill number 2588.
First reading by title only.
Motion and a second.
Got a motion and a second, the bill number 2588. Given its first reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye. All opposed?
All opposed? Please proceed.
The bill to create an ordinance entitled, the ordinance fixing the annual bridge taxation in the city of Centralia Missouri for the year 2025 for general revenue purposes, for maintenance and support of library and forest housing and maintaining three public parks. The bill number 2588, given its second reading by title only.
The first and second for bill number 2588. Got a first and a second for bill number two-five-eight-eight, given its second reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, please proceed.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled the ordinance fixing the annual rate of taxation in the city of Centralia Missouri for the year twenty-twenty-five for general revenue purposes, for maintenance and support of library and forest conservation and maintaining free public parks. I move the bill number two-five-eight-eight, be adopted by roll call vote.
Got a motion and a second.
Got a motion and a second for bill number two-five-eight-eight, be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Carried.
Roll call vote, please.
Omen Orsini. Omen Hudson. Omen Wilkins. Omen Deckard. Omen Deckard.
Motion carries, ordinance number please.
Three-two-one-nine.
Brings us to B. Legal read adopting sections of the city of Centralia State Code concerning procedure disclosure of certain financial information.
Motion with bill number two-five-eight-five, given its first reading by title only.
Second. Got, uh, this is bill number two-five-eight-nine, got a motion and a second for bill number two-five-eight-nine, given its first reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, please proceed.
Re-adoption of section two-thousand-seven and section two-thousand-eight. Trade City Code, Trade City Code, procedure concerning procedures for certain city employees to disclose. Financial and other financial matters affecting the city of Centralia Missouri. Move the bill number two-five-eight-nine, be given its second reading.
Second.
On title only.
Got a motion and a second, bill number two-five-eight-nine, given its second reading by title only, all in favor?
All opposed?
All opposed?
Carries, please proceed.
Motion carries, please proceed.
Re-adoption of section two-thousand-seven and section two-thousand-eight. And section two-thousand-eight. Trade City Code. Trade City Code, concerning procedures for certain city employees, officials and employees to disclose financial and other financial matters affecting the city of Centralia Missouri. Move the bill number two-five-eight-nine, be adopted by roll call vote. Adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, bill number two-five-eight-nine, be adopted by roll call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Carries, roll call vote, please.
Motion carries, roll call vote, please.
Omen Orsini. Omen Hudson. Omen Wilkins. Omen Deckard. Omen Rogers. Omen Rogers.
Motion carries, ordinance number please. Thank you.
Brings us to C, which is a motion about four hours' time for benefiting employees to maintain health and wellness points, something we've done several years.
A row now, it's a great benefit for the employees to do this.
Easily.
Easily, uh, something that others do. So.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Brings us to old business review of a draft. Um, the members solicitors, sponsors and peddlers ordinances.
Um, I believe we captured everything we discussed at our meeting, um, did add.
We did add.
Definitions and just made things a lot more clear, um, an effort between the NII votes and, um.
I have two things.
Yes.
Section, uh, section three, C three, having a timing of nine to six.
Section six A.
Section six A had nine to seven on it.
That would be a discrepancy here, which would, which would, which would the board first? I would correct, I should believe those, uh, that's got it until seven.
Yeah.
More reasonable.
I thought it was just a discrepancy here.
I thought it was just a discrepancy.
City marshal.
And city marshal.
What kind of city marshal?
I saw that in there a couple of times.
You can change it, please. Yeah, it didn't.
Yeah.
This is not eighteen, this is not eighteen thirty-five.
Uh, son.
You don't want your city marshal to come up here and do it? The cowboy hat?
With his horse.
And then which section had?
Uh, six o'clock was section three, C three.
Section three.
Section three.
B.
C.
Mention of city marshal is in section eleven.
Overall, though, what did the board feel like it was comprehensive and, and, I mean, my, my key thing when I work with people is obviously we've got to make sure we don't impede interstate commerce, so. The ability of, you know, companies to still be able to do business but not impede that interstate access.
I think this nailed it.
A lot of the suggestions I threw out there.
They're in there, right? They are. Um, we also plan to send out a mail with the bill when we pass this, just with the short discussion of what the ordinance is, what the city is doing to help protect our residents from, uh, not out there to do non-business.
That way we can talk on what protections are.
And what their rights are if they want to put out enough, no facilitation, sign. Yeah, I, I would, I would encourage that if your citizens are concerned that no trespassing, no solicitation, those who, you know, be purchased taking place in the doors and so that kind of. Sorry, what?
They ignore.
Oh, well, then that gives a cause of action for our, our police department to go in. I'm sorry.
Working around on scooter again.
We don't have any such license out right now.
Yeah, very specific language in this draft specifically for that.
Has number four, has number four on the ticket?
Yes.
That's a violation.
That's a violation of city.
Call the police department. Call the police department. Everyone wants, all those changes, I will make those.
All those changes, I'll order them next month for formal adoption.
Any other feedback?
Okay.
This is on to number eleven, which is moving the September Board of Alderman to the twenty-second, need a motion for that?
Second.
Got a motion and a second.
Got a motion and a second.
The Board of Alderman.
The Board of Alderman, the Board of Alderman meeting September twenty-second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Carries, thank you.
Motion carries, thank you.
For, uh, number thirteen.
Got number thirteen, we have appointments.
Conference to a five-year.
Conference to a five-year term on the planning and zoning commission.
And Dan Hamilton.
And Dan Hamilton, the Board of Adjustment for a five-year term.
Ethan Maysey and Paul Millian.
Ethan Maysey and Paul Millian, he's probably a industrial development authority for a six-year term.
All at once.
All at once.
We, we, uh, for a second, we want to clarify. Any, any permission? It may be a, it's a typographical error in the change.
What is Chris, please, your poll?
He's not a buzz session. He's not a buzz session.
Oh.
While they're looking that up, just a quick note, uh, here, pretty quick, we're gonna be going into closed session and when we do that, we don't, we don't actually have anything scheduled after closed session other than a journey, so at that point. If folks are just here to hear what's going on, we basically look what's going on.
And then you're all done.
And then you're all done with. I've never been with me, that's why I don't want to say.
Exactly. After the closed session, all we do is we come back and say, if there's a close out, say if there's a closing close session.
I, so that's where it should be for four years. Appointment to a meeting. Because.
The only thing between that, between this and closed session is the administrative.
Well, this is a typographical error. Yeah, mentioned that it should have been for a four-year term.
Okay, so. Okay, so, and then.
Typographical error.
Typographical error for the first appointment of Johnson Smith. It is a four-year term on the planning and zoning, B and C are as typed on the notes. So we, for the motion, for.
All of them together?
All of them together or separate?
I would make an motion. The mayor's collection of appointments with change addendum, change the appointment of Johnson Smith to a four-year term on the planning and zoning.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to accept, uh, the appointments in thirteen with the amendment for Johnson Smith to a four-year term, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Carries, thank you all.
Motion carries, thank you all. Brings us to the city administrator's monthly report, which is in the packet. Two pages of the packet.
Yes, so it's been.
So it's been.
Been a busy month. Uh, got quite a bit in there and quite a bit that's not. Um, so we did attend the Merma annual conference, uh, Maryland, I voted, learned quite a bit and brought it back with us. Actually meeting with Merma tomorrow. Time to go over some things, um. They attended, one of the most interesting things I attended was a PIO, um, meeting at Boone County Emergency Management. And basically it was, uh, a group out of, uh, Kansas City. Who, uh, put on lots of different, um, big, large-scale events, um, the reason why this is affected, unfortunately, is because, um, everyone doesn't know, FIFA's being, uh, helping the city this next year. And, um.
What does the? What does the?
Public information officer.
Public information officer.
Sorry, yes. Sorry, yes. Um, but.
What FIFA is?
FIFA's the international soccer. Big sentence.
Oh.
Huge soccer.
I knew what that was, but I was wondering if this was a, a government version of.
You never know, they're the same acronym.
There's the same acronym used across the.
First and first.
That's FIFO, first in, first out, yes. I know that one, based from a material standpoint.
But, uh, FIFA will be, it's a six-week event and people don't just travel to where the event is taking place. There's lots of international countries that will be coming, um, to Kansas City, Missouri, and you can imagine what that's going to do, so, um, we've already been told that. The, um, hotel rooms in Columbia, Missouri have already been running out for the six-week time frame. It's also extending down to St. Louis, so that's just gonna open up a unique opportunity for Centralia to have lots of different people in the area, meeting with, um, Chamber this week. Um, in addition to all of that going on, next year is the two-hundred-fiftyth anniversary of foundation freedom, so gonna be talking about if we want to do anything extra next year for that. Uh, for the, our fourth of July celebration, so just lots of things going on, um. We've been, everybody's been, everybody's any questions about?
Everybody's any questions about, you know?
The bicentennial in seventy-six was a hoot, I remember that. Um, I mean, every place, I mean, it's every place did something in nineteen seventy-six for the bicentennial. I don't know how big your celebrations are, for the simple reason that nobody knows how to say the word for it.
I don't. I don't.
Nobody can say it in print.
There is, I, there, there is, I, I cannot pronounce it, it saved my life, but there is a word for the two-hundred-fiftyth anniversary.
Any questions for our city administrator? Brings us. I don't know, there's something under for our city attorney.
That's my vote. That's my vote. That's my vote.
Brings us to our closed session. I know normally I do, but. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. Thank you very much. Second.
During the meeting, the Board of Alderman would like to go to closed session, vote, hold a closed vote, votes that purpose to suggest closed session shall be closed, shall be. Right, let's, let's, section six, law number two-one, number one, statute one, reserved for legal actions, or litigation, or litigation, or litigation, or any government body. Any confidential or any confidential or privileged application of any body, or present body, or representatives, and to. The highest representative, including any discussions on behalf of the public, on behalf of the government body, governmental body, or representative bodies for negotiation, employee groups. Employee groups.
Motion and a second. Got a motion and a second to go to closed session, roll call vote, please.
Omen Orsini. Omen Hudson. Omen Wilkins. Omen Deckard. Omen Rogers. Omen Rogers.
Carries. We're going into closed session. Get back to my agenda.
Okay. We're back from closed session.
We're back from closed session. Lots of conversation.
We'll make a motion if we're ready. We'll return to.
Yes.
Make a motion if we're ready.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye. Buddy, thank you for bearing.
Adjourn, thank you, buddy, thank you for bearing witness to the long meeting.